Yeah?
Okay, good evening, everyone. My name is Dan Holdridge. I'm gonna start with a quick announcement from Lynn Garland. She wanted to show something quickly to all. So, something very special happened this Tuesday, August 13th, in Deerfield. Starting at 6:00 PM, we will be having a performance by a premier Ukrainian bandura musician and songwriter, Anastasia Voituk. The bandura is a multi-stringed flute instrument, and is Ukraine's national instrument. The free concert will start at 6:00 PM in the great room of the Deerfield Community Church. It is a family-friendly concert, and goodwill donations or Ukrainian relief efforts will be greatly appreciated. Refreshments will be provided at the end of the performance. Come enjoy a special musical evening this Tuesday, the 13th of August, at 6:00 PM. So, thank you for that. Okay, so, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for coming this evening. I'll call this special deliberative session meeting to order at 6:00 PM. Safety, there's no smoking anywhere in the building. Please take a moment to notice the exits of the building in case of emergency. This evening's special deliberative session is called to order per New Hampshire RSA 197-03, which allows for a special meeting to address cost items only. Section 3 reads, "In the event that the legislative body on the annual meeting amends or rejects the cost items or fat finders reports submitted pursuant to RSA 273-8, notwithstanding paragraphs 1 and 2, the school board may call one special meeting for the sole purpose of addressing all negotiated cost items without petitioning the Superior Court for authorization. Such special meeting may be authorized only by contingent warrant article inserted on the warrant or official ballot, either by petition or by the governing body." Warrant Article Number 3, on February 10, 2024, was approved and thus authorizes this meeting for the sole purpose of the discussion of a paraprofessional contract with Deerfield Community School. Per New Hampshire law, this legal document cannot be amended at this meeting and is only open for discussion. Again, my name is Dan Holdridge, your school district moderator. This special deliberative session acts as a legislative body for reviewing the one warrant article to be voted on September 10, 2024 ballot. We want everyone to feel welcome, and everyone in attendance will have the same opportunity to speak and respectfully be heard. As your school district moderator, I appreciate your willingness to support our efforts to bring about a fair and smooth meeting this evening. I appreciate your understanding for my efforts to get clarity and productivity through our session. We do ask that all Deerfield residents kindly sign in with the supervisor's checklist as procedure for deliberative sessions. Since the warrant article being discussed tonight cannot be amended, no voting cards are required. If you can, kindly turn your cell phones off or into vibrate mode, and if you need to make a call, please go outside. Obviously, the exception would be fire in place. We'll begin with an introduction to our school district officials, and then go over some housekeeping items to ensure a orderly meeting. So, our school board. We have our Chair Kendra Cohen, our Vice Chair Ellen O'Donnell, Missy Perron, Nate Oxner, and Nancy Shute, and then Superintendent Kathy Sherman, Principal Mrs. Kristen Withy. I don't know if our Vice Principals here today?
Not tonight.
Not tonight, okay. And then our school district treasurer, Eric Gross. And then our supervisors, the checklist, Suzanne Steele and Maureen Quinn back there, the lovely folks that greeted us here. And then we'll move on to our purpose, rules, and decor of today's session. So, I'm gonna read through this quickly. If you need me to explain anything, I'll do so. But since it's one warrant article, we can dispense with a lot of the additional rules that we typically have at a legislative deliberative session. So, again, this is the two special deliberative session for the 2024 Deerfield School District Meeting, as defined in New Hampshire RSA 652-16F. You will act as a legislative body to discuss the one paraprofessional contract warrant article that will be voted on at the Deerfield Town Hall on September 10. The article being discussed tonight, by law, must be placed on the ballot without amendments. Each per RSA 40-13 warrant articles may be amended subject to the following limitations. A is the warrant articles whose wording is prescribed by law, as this is, shall not be amended. Each member who wishes to participate in the meeting should have checked in with the supervisor's checklist. If you're a registered voter and have not checked in, kindly do so now. If there's any individuals who are not registered voters in Deerfield this evening, though you are not permitted to vote, by Deerfield tradition, you are permitted to participate in the discussion this evening, but I actually will continue that tradition this evening. The rules are, our special meeting is for the transaction of all business other than voting by official ballot. The special session shall consist of explanation, discussion, and debate of each warrant article. Since Deerfield operates via Senate Bill Number 2 Town Meeting, this one article will be on the ballot as printed this evening. The Chair will read the one article and then recognize a representative of the warrant article author, who will be our Chair Kendra Cohen. And to speak, in the event you want to share comments related to the warrant article costs only, please stand and approach the microphone following the warrant article's introduction. The Chair will recognize members at the microphone in turn. When it's your turn to speak, kindly step up to the microphone and speak directly into it. The microphone is voice activated, and your remarks are recorded, so the clerk may make an accurate record of this meeting. All remarks must be confined to the merits of the pending question or the question of word of privilege, and all remarks must be addressed to the Chair. When recognized, please state your name and address to begin addressing the Chair. Each speaker, if not the author of the warrant article, who is presenting the article's information, will be allowed three minutes to express his or her views. You may speak as many times as you wish, but all members who wish to speak will have a first turn before a second turn. The overriding principle on all bases is fairness. A speaker may address the current pending question, or they may move to close the debate, but may not do so in the same turn. That means if a speaker argues for a change of motion, he or she may not then conclude the remarks with, "And I moved the previous question." We got this rule many years ago, and with the support of the Assembly, we'll follow it in this meeting. If there's something you wish to accomplish here but uncertain to have it perceived, please ask. And then finally, the role of moderator is to fairly organize and regulate the meeting according to the rules agreeable by the legislative body in attendance. Rules of moderator are subject to appeal by a member. An appeal must be made immediately following a ruling. A second is required, and the ruling and appeal will be explained to the legislative body, and the members will vote to stay and reverse the ruling. This meeting is being recorded for viewing at a later date to be posted on the school district website. We thank you for being part of today's special district, school district deliberative session, and we hope to see you all again anytime between 7:00 AM and 7:00 PM on September 10. So, put that in your calendar, September 10, for the state primary and school district warrant article election to be held at the Town Hall on Church Street. So, I'll now introduce the warrant article number one. And it reads, "To the State of New Hampshire, to the inhabitants of the school district in the town of Deerfield, qualified development district affairs, you are hereby notified to meet at the Deerfield Community School in said district on the 7th day of August 2024 at 6 o'clock in the evening to deliberate upon the warrant articles below. This session shall consist of explanation, discussion, and debate of each warrant article. Warrant articles may be amended subject to the following limitations. A. Warrant articles whose wording is prescribed by law shall not be amended. B. Articles that are amended shall be placed on the official ballot for a final vote when the motion is amended. And C. No warrant articles shall be amended to eliminate the subject matter of the article. An amendment that changes the dollar value of an appropriation of a warrant article should not be deemed to violate this provision. Voting on warrant articles will be conducted by official ballot at the second session scheduled for September 10, 2024, at the Town Hall, 10 Church Street, Deerfield, New Hampshire, on 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM." The article reads, "Number one, shall the Deerfield School District vote to approve that cost items set forth in the collective bargaining agreement reached between the Deerfield School Board and the Deerfield Para-Education Educators Association for the '24, '25, '25, '26, '26, '27, and '27, '28 fiscal years, which calls for the following estimated increases in salaries and benefits at the current staffing level? '24, '25 is $70,738. '25, '26 is $52,578. '26, '27 is $47,208. We have '27, '28 is $40,410. And further, to raise appropriate sum of $70,738 for the '24, '25 fiscal year, such sum representing the additional costs attributable to the increase in salaries and benefits required by the new agreement over those that would be paid at current staffing levels. Majority vote required. The school board recommended 400. The budget committee recommends 650. If passed, the tax impact will be nine cents per thousand." And that was given out in the hands of said Deerfield on the 22nd day of July 2024 and signed by the school district board. So with that, I'll introduce our Chair Cohen, who can present this warrant article. Thank you.
Hi, everybody. Thank you so much for coming tonight. I recognize that many of you might have other things to do on this beautiful August evening, but we really appreciate you being here. This contract represents a restructuring of para compensation. Similar to the last contract, we froze longevity and we froze the longevity and decreased the number of steps to make more monies available to go directly to the hourly wages. This will help get more paras in the door. We had five paras resign at the end of the school year, and we're gonna be scrambling to get positions filled before school starts in just a few weeks. As of late this afternoon, we still have three open positions, so this is more important than ever. This past school year, we had three paras in Step 1, two paras in Step 2, four paras in Step 3. We didn't have any paras in Steps 4 through 6. The vast majority of our paras, 13.8, are in Step 7, which is the highest step. To me, this suggests we have a gap in retaining mid-level paras. It also suggests to me that while it's wonderful to have so many experienced and very dedicated paras, there aren't as many currently in the pipeline. So, any retirement or resignation from that very loyal group is very impactful to the schools. As many of you know, if we don't have enough paras to cover services outlined in students' IEPs, we will have to consider contracting services and/or out-of-district placements, the costs of which are unknown and would likely be much higher. Overall, this new contract represents a 25% decrease in the first-year estimated total cost from what was presented and voted on in March. The cost on the ballot in March for the first year was $94,853. The new contract has an estimated first-year cost of $70,738, a reduction of $24,025%. The tax impact is also reduced by 33%. It was 12 cents per thousand in March, and the new estimated tax impact is nine cents per thousand. In my view, this contract represents the board and the paras' joint priority in attracting new staff and retaining the dedicated paras that we heavily rely on. The wage table presented represents a fairer wage for the entire slate of paras and is supported by the Para Association, all five school board members, and the majority of municipal budget committee. Thank you for your time tonight, and if you have any questions or comments, we invite you to say them now.
Thank you. Okay, so now we open up the floor to if anyone in the community would like to speak regarding the cost of the paraprofessional contract only. That's what is open for discussion tonight. Would anyone like to come to my phone and speak, please? And when you start, just please kindly state your name and your address, please.
Kathy Berry, Lakes Hill Road. Let's firstly thank you for hearing us today. I've been a para here at DCS for 19 years. I have a lot to say, but I'll start by explaining just a small part of our job description. A lot of people don't know exactly what you do. Is that better?
Yeah, you can lower it if you need. It's awful, again. Just wanna make sure everyone's hearing this. Thank you.
The day of life of a para is very different depending on what grade you're in. At the middle school level, a para wears many different hats daily. We do lunch and recess duties, we're advisors and mentors. We work in small and large groups. We often sub when there's no substitutes available. We help plan and run win advisory and matic groups, which are advisory groups. We practice tests in small group settings. We're very resourceful in finding spaces to work quietly with kids when there's no space available. We make modifications, redirect, we give mini lessons, we help the co-mark during lunch and recess. Some paras, including myself, buy supplies and stacks for students who come to school without those necessities to help them get through the day. We do more than just academics. We form relationships and listen and try to make learning fun. I think it's important that voters know that about 80% of Deerfield paras live in Deerfield and are feeling all the same tax increases. The other 20% live in surrounding towns that are also seeing tax increases. We've had applicants decline the position offering after hearing what we made. We can afford to work here because our rates are updated. Right now, we're starting at $40,000 an hour, which is $4.55 more than what I'm making now after being here for 19 years. It's time to bring Deerfield paras up to what surrounding towns are making. Most Deerfield residents will see an increase of less than $50 a year. It's also important for voters to know that insurance premiums have increased. So, without a new contract, paras will actually be taking home less money each pay period for the upcoming school year than we did last year. An example of this, it would be a para currently on a two-person plan would take home $57 less per month than they did last year. And I'd also like to point out that 62% of our paras are certified through the state of New Hampshire, which is amazing, which means we either have college degrees or equivalencies. So, we have a great team here, and let's hope that everybody votes yes, and we can keep everybody and bring new people on.
Thank you. Other folks that'd like to visit tonight? Good evening.
Good evening. Kathy Poole, Maple Ave. I have lived in Deerfield for over 20 years. For the past 16 years, I have worked as a para at our school. Imagine how I felt when, back in June, I found a job posting for a transfer station attendant, and that position had a starting pay that is $2 more an hour than what I am currently making after 16 years of hard work. I am angry, upset, and frustrated. I do not understand how my neighbors, how my community, can be willing to pay more to have their trash taken care of than your own children. It makes no sense. At the current pay being offered, we are not able to hire the necessary staff needed to best serve the students' current needs. I was told just recently a young lady from town applied for a para position here and at other neighboring towns. When she was offered the position, she declined. She chose a para position out of town for more money. It's also hard on the staff morale to not feel supported at work. Every day, we are asked to come to work with a positive attitude, a smile on our face, and the upbeat energy needed to interact positively with students. When you are underpaid and in a town that you feel devalues your work, it is hard to do that. If this contract fails, not only will we continue to struggle to fill open positions, but we risk losing paras to other communities. And I know Kathy touched on it as well, but if this doesn't pass with the increase in premiums, a lot of us will be bringing home even less money than we did last year. I am asking for the community's help in passing this contract. We are not asking for much. Please, please, show us that you do care about the community and its youngest members. Thank you.
Thank you. Others? Anyone to visit? Please.
Hi. All right, hi, I'm Brittany Nichols, and I live on Mountain Road in Deerfield. And I am here representing the para education. And first, I have to start off, because I was a para here at DCS for nearly 10 years. I ended up leaving last year, obviously, for more money and another district. I still play volleyball, which I love, because it allows this career to be part of here. I'd like the community to know that it is very hard to make the living in Deerfield and live in Deerfield on the current salary offered. I am encouraging voters to vote yes for the para contract. There is a para shortage, and paras are needed to benefit all kids. Not only special education, but paras play such an important role in education and well-being of all kids. We advocate for those who are unable to, and promote inclusion and independence. We also help with emotional and social support. This job is very rewarding, watching students grow and strive for their possibilities and potential. I miss my students, and I miss my DCS family. It was a very difficult decision for me to leave, but financially, I had to. I know the recent tax bills are hitting everyone hard right now, but when you really look at the numbers, the average home value is around $400,000 in Deerfield. We'll only increase your amount by $36 a year. To me, it's a small price to pay for students to have the best education possible with needed support. Thank you for listening, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak in this manner today. Thank you, Dan.
Thank you. Others? Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Cynthia Maimoni. I live on Small Road. I earned my Bachelor of Science in Elementary Education at Plymouth State College, and I taught for three years in Rochester. And then I became a substitute for three years here. Before that, I was in Chichester for three years as a parent, so a lot of experience in different places with children. I mainly work in the lower grades here at DCS, and I, like many paras coming early to prepare for the day, many of us meet our students at the car or at the bus. We make sure that they arrive safely at their room, and some of us don't lose sight of our children all day until we hand them back to their parents, unless they are with another teacher. We assist when needed, helping students prepare for the day. Many of us go to all of the integrated arts, and sometimes we help make the integrated arts more successful for our children. Many of us have recess duty and lunch duty. We help open containers, help with winter gear. Some of us need to be with our students at lunch and recess every day. Some of us help with toiletting and the occasional stomach issues, bloody noses, break knees, all of that. We also redirect behavior to help keep students safe on the stairs and in the halls. We clean classrooms in self-referenced, make copies, prepare and adapt lessons to reinforce skills that are learned. We make games and flashcards to assist in learning about a topic. We make bulletin boards, help out at concerts and talent shows, and make field trips accessible to some students who might not be able to go if we were not with them. We help turn a difficult day into a positive day, and we make learning fun. In my teaching position, I would like to speak on class size. I had 22 students in my class. We had no paras, no support at all. It was not easy. I know the value of smaller classes, like we have in Deerfield, for all students. Smaller classes make for better learning for all students. No child should feel lost at school. I also feel strongly about everyone deserving a living wage with benefits. There are good people who want to work here but cannot afford to. We all want our children to have good jobs with benefits. Someday, some of our students may come back as paras. If our salaries are not competitive, they won't come, and they won't stay, and we will miss out. Thank you.
Anyone else would like to visit this evening?
Oh, Triskillum, and wondering, is it possible to define the starting wage for the paras on these steps? For me, I was retired 20 years ago. And I have to say that I made, at my job, what I made at my starting job in 1989, 80. I think it's 80. As a college person working in the arts department in 1980, which was a long time ago, and 20 years ago. That's when I retired after 20 years here. So, it's kind of shameful on the way. People need to think about that. And I also would like to detail that, for public reference, the paras are paid only by the hour under contract. They are not paid for vacations, not paid for summer. That's a misunderstanding within our town sometimes that I think is not what I've gotten from people. And that might clarify that they think they're being paid for all this time off. They are not.
Sure.
Sure. So, if you haven't taken a look at the contract, it's posted on the DCS website, or the SAU website, sorry, the Town website. And I would encourage you to look at the whole thing, but there is a wage schedule as the last page. So, just to give you a little bit of a sense, for Step 1 this year, a para, so a new para coming in would make $13.14 an hour. The new contract for a brand-new para, if this were approved, would make $17.68 an hour. So, a top-step para last year would make $16.45 an hour. If this were passed, a top-step para would make $19.95.
Okay, others?
Suzanne Steele, Hardywood. Wow. My question was going to be based on the front, that why are the numbers going down in so many years? Because we know nothing really goes down in so many years. And my mother was a teacher. I was brought up in the school system. She worked with IEPs, and McDonald's and all the rest of the fast foods are paying a lot more than this. So, I would love some feedback on that.
So, on the warrant article, you mean, like why it goes down each year?
Yes, yes.
So, the wages do go up every year, which is great, and everyone increases a step for each year. I think it probably is less because at some point, the paras sort of catch up, and it's less of a jump year to year. This is the increase. This is not the total cost of the para salaries, it's the increase. So, if you increase, you know, the most year 1, then you're doing smaller increases after that, if that makes sense. I don't know if you can explain that. Yes.
So, the wage scale has five steps. So, after five years, you're at the top, making the max. So, you're only getting the increase to that top step. When you first start, you're gonna move to Step 2, which is an increase, and that wage at that step then up as well. So, it's a little bit more than once you hit the top, and we have a lot of paras that are gonna be five years of experience and won't get as much of an increase these last few years.
But the wage scale does go up.
Yep.
So, they will earn more every year that they're here, until the top step.
Thank you. Others to visit this evening?
Tom Millen, Angstrom. I'm gonna try to cheat and throw two questions in here. Could you tell me how many paras of school employees? And could you speak to what the benefits package for a para costs us?
Sure.
What a benefits package costs?
23?
Is that how many? So, there are a few open positions currently. So, I think we employ 22 currently, and we still need to fill 3. The benefits cost is a good question. I can get my budget book. Hold on. I knew I brought this for a reason. All right. I don't know if it's broken down. It's not broken. Never mind. The best place to look is the contact online, because it outlines the benefits that they receive step by step. It's...
So, we don't have it broken up by staff member or the amount for each of the benefits. That's not increasing in this, and we do pay a portion of their health insurance plan, and then they pay the majority of the portion of it. And they get things like sick leave and personal days, but that's really the incentive of the benefits.
But there's a cost to that in the budget. Do we have any idea what that is, or is that a misgroup?
I don't have that with me. If you'd like to email me or write down your email, I'd be delighted to follow up with you on that. But it's not broken out that way in the budget.
Yeah, I'm sorry, the budget has the total health insurance for all of our employees, but it's not broken out specifically for the paras.
Other comments this evening for this warrant article?
Just before, Nancy Chu, just before this meeting, we heard that one person who thought was going to fill one of those three positions declined and accepted a position in another town for $10 more an hour. We found that out just this afternoon.
Any other comments regarding this evening, this Warren article, regarding the contract for Warren article? Go once, go twice. Okay, so that will conclude, I will, we'll conclude tonight's special delivery session. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Moved. Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any of those? We are adjourned. Have a good rest of your summer anyway. Thank you.
Thank you.
School board meeting of, I was going to read August, but... 6/37. If you could join me in standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Hi, Pledge of Allegiance, to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, the first item on the agenda is the minutes. We have quite a few minutes to review, so we'll take them one at a time. We'll start with June 5th. If anyone wants to make a motion.
Just again, a couple of typos.
So let's, you saw the procedural steps. You need to make a motion to approve it, then we get a second. And then we can talk about it, and then either we vote for a big one.
Okay, anything to discuss?
And typos again. Yeah. My last name. On the bus route appeal, Kelly is too well. Again, my last name, and I'm going to leave two teams up in the next meeting. Also, motion is made by Ellen Bell. Secondly, if I didn't hear her move to, I think that's supposed to say three, in guidance. And it says, we're missing an E on that one. Again, Karen. And that's it?
Okay. Any other discussion? Or any other, any other changes? Okay, so we will make a motion to approve with those typos. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any extensions? Okay, one exception. All right, June 19th.
Make a motion.
All right, any discussion?
Yes, please. On the second page for buses. Spelling buses B-U-S-E-S is appropriate. Spelling buses B-U-S-E-S is appropriate. But let's have some consistency, please. Using great words. Yeah. And on the last page, next schedule will be built to begin August 6th, 2024, I should say, August 7th.
Okay, any other discussion? All right, all in favor of approving the minutes with those additions?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any extensions? All right, five up. And July 2nd. Nate and Ellen, any discussion? Okay. All in favor of approving July 2nd minutes as written?
Aye.
Any opposed? And any exceptions? One exception. All right, we will move on to public comments. Okay, no public comments, so then we'll go to agenda review. I don't think I have anything to add.
I mean, sorry. We need to add one consent, so it will be two total. We did get the bus routes today.
Ooh.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'd like to add, I don't know if this is appropriate, but I'd like to add, hopefully, that we need to look into some sort of policy possibly for the entire Deerfield student body to be able to know that they can access me on sports and extracurricular activities with the high schools and the school, whether they're home school or private school. There's no clear way for them, for parents, to teach children, not in DCS, to know how to do that. So we need to, we need to take it up.
We can add that as a discussion to a following meeting, if that works?
Yep.
And we'll see what we have in the meantime. I don't know if there's something in the handbook or somewhere else, but we'll look into that. Thank you for the suggestion. Okay. Review of correspondence. There was no correspondence to the entirety of the board, I believe. Okay, consent agenda, two items.
Yes. Excuse me, you have a child hearing leave that if you wish to discuss, we would have to do that in non-public session. If there's no discussion, you can go ahead and prove that now. So that's in the packet?
Well, I'm happy to wait till the public.
Okay, okay. We'll look to non, that's in non-public.
Kelly was, can we move on? Yeah, Kelly was able to get us some bus routes this afternoon, and we made copies. She did indicate that she still felt like she was missing some information and waiting to hear from some more families, and especially at the high schools. Some students were missing when she got the list, and she feels like there's going to be changes. But we thought it would be a good idea to get them preliminarily approved so we could post them and give families some idea of what they were going to look like. And then if there are edits and changes, we can bring those to the next meeting.
Is it more annoying for families to get edited bus routes principally? Or do you think they prefer having a preliminary bus route?
Because we have, we got one more meeting in two weeks before school starts. Is that too late? Do people not like?
I don't think so. I don't, I don't typically send the routes out until right before school's starting.
My preference would be, I think, to not put something, we think there's going to be some significant differences.
You do think so?
She didn't say significant. We, the board can absolutely wait. The board backed up the timeline because we're having so many issues and missing buses and drivers, and so they did back it up to the first August meeting. But if it's, if you think families are comfortable waiting and that's what you want to do, we can tell her, please finalize them and give them to us at the next meeting, and we'll approve them then.
What do you want to do?
I know. Have we ever gotten a lot of feedback?
It's more, especially the beginning of the year, a lot of feedback of my stop isn't on there. We did send out a survey asking families for what their transportation needs would be. Per day of transportation needed that information, so we sent something out.
I guess it would be a benefit to send it out, and if people aren't on there, then they would know. And then they could adjust them.
We can put draft on it.
Okay.
I think that's fine.
I think you do, yeah.
And then everybody doesn't get all upset, because if they see a bus route and they're not on there, they're like, oh my God.
Right. If you want to.
I think it's in there. Think, are there copies of bus routes in there?
I handed, yeah, there's one of the packets. One of the extra packets is yours. So that enrollment she Kendra, then there's a packet. Yeah.
It looks like the same number of buses as it did last year.
We did have the problem at the end of the year. Is this the same that we had? Didn't we have a change at the end?
Yeah, we had to take for a high school.
There was an issue, yeah, but this is back to. So. High school is the area that probably is going to have the most changes.
Okay.
She got the list of names from the registrar, but she felt like there were enough names missing that had taken the bus previously that she felt like she didn't have all the information.
And she was aware of the code of change?
Yes.
Looks like there are six buses.
If we can, can we put draft on them?
Yeah, I'm happy to.
I think that would help clear some confusion. I will make a motion to approve the bus routes.
Okay.
Any discussion? Yeah, I just, I wouldn't want people to think, you know, be wedded to their 7:14 pickup and then have a change. And then have bad feelings about that, so I think draft is good. Okay. All in favor of approving the bus routes as draft?
Aye.
Aye. Is that both things?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Media business, facilities updates. I see Chris in the back there. Hi, Chris. How's the summer?
Summer's busy.
Yeah, that's what I heard.
So I've been here four years, just a little over four years, and I keep saying this, the last three years. But I'm going to start tonight out with the quality. These are the 18 people that came and worked for me this year. Without them, the school wouldn't look the way it does. Every year, we just keep, I, every year, we just keep improving on how we're going to be here. So 18 kids from high school, 14, 15, 16-year-olds coming in to work for me during the summer on a very tight schedule, eight weeks, says a lot for these kids. So I'd like to just read their names off real quick. Most of them are former middle school students, not gone on to. There's only three or four that are not, but Forrest Sawyer, Adam Schuck, Noah Gendring, Finn Stimmel, George Knoll, Riley Bailey, Jason Alder, Arthur Scrogg, Josh Poe, Connor Wilson, Jack Liddy, Cynthia Maimoni, who's also a carry here. She's like the Energizer Bunny, so I wouldn't get a lot of the stuff done without Cynthia. Anthony McGinnis, Lilian McGinnis, Cameron DuBois, Levi Smith, Cora Kui, and Carrie Duggan. Biggest group I've ever had, 18 kids, says a lot, you know? Hopefully, they all return this year. Quick update on the major projects. Stack update, we're getting close, we're getting close. Our equipment is being shipped. We should have it, and it should be fully installed, ready for inspection before or at school starts. There's really no issues if it had to run late. We're not using heat anyways. We have our own hot water boiler, so it's independent from everything else. Exhaust fans have been installed, seven new fans. You can actually, from the first floor, hear the draft out of the hallways and bathrooms, so bonus there. Fire alarm update, we're about 90% of demo. RB Lewis is doing the final calculations on the chief's request for smoke detectors in the gym. And then we have another couple small items that we need to do, so we're getting close, we're getting close. Once we do the calculations, the calculations need to be submitted to the town fire chief just so we can look over and make sure everything's correct. We do not have to go to the state for this because it's beyond what the state requested. Solar panels, solar paperwork has been submitted for the REAP grant. We're just waiting, Barrington Power is just waiting to confirm that and to make sure that they don't, they're not requesting any other additional information. PFAS testing, we started a program with the state where they came in under our dime, their dime, to test for PFAS, so that'll be a couple more weeks before I hear back anything from them.
That's all right.
Do you hear that? Yes, from, I think you want it from our walls. Yep, they're doing random testing of the steam in their ship. Citywide contract, who is the cleaning company that does our night work. They submitted another bid for this year. They held their price for the last two years at $240 a night. I'd like approval from the school board tonight to make sure they're signing that contract and securing them for their school year.
At the same price as last year? Is that covered in, is that part covered in the budget?
We fall a little short on the budget because they're a little more expensive than if we had hourly employees. But our hourly employees rate for nighttime escorting is $14 an hour. When I was interviewing the last, last time I was interviewing someone for that position, they were making $18 or $19 or $10 for the schools for nighttime work, so.
I think we're good because we fall a little bit short, but the, our benefit lines had money in them because we'd have to pay taxes and all that on employees.
And by my calculations, I should have $30,000, $13,000 remaining in my summer time budget that can be put towards that, so it should actually be covered.
Okay, good.
So, yep.
Thank you.
And isn't that something where this would need to go to bid just because of a significant change in the contract?
It should, but honestly, I just didn't have time. I mean, I'm sorry.
I mean, for our policies, it would require to do this.
You, you can waive the policy to keep the, extend the contract to the current company you have unless you, unless Chris felt like there was an issue or the board felt like there was reason to go out.
And we're generally satisfied with the way it's been done?
Very responsive to any questions or any concerns I've had, so, yes.
And they know the building?
Yeah.
Yeah, they know the building.
Okay. I will make a motion to renew the citywide contract for another year. Is it the school year or?
Yeah, just for this 24, 25.
Okay. Okay. Any discussion?
How many news articles?
There are three. They come in roughly, their schedule is much more flexible. They come in around 6 o'clock, they leave 6 p.m., and they leave around 2 a.m.
Any other discussion? Okay, all in favor of renewing the citywide contract for the next year?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Anything else?
Aye, no. Once again, the kids have done a great job here. I mean, I've run, created a sandbox out there. I've had them replace floor tile, baseboard. I mean, it's just amazing what these kids have done. I'm not the easiest person. I have higher expectations. So yeah, they just, they just did it, so, yeah, it's really great.
Well, thank you for all of your hard work and being a mentor to all of our, all of our workers. Thank you.
Chris, the gym fan?
Oh my God.
Yeah.
The gym fan for a couple of years, just been slowly going, grinding to the point where they're going to actually cut it off during the day. And Principal Liddy gets to hear it very soon. You almost need to point it out.
Yeah.
As it is just.
It's amazing.
Whisper.
We'll have to get Mr. Langley's here.
Yeah.
The whole gym is almost, we painted the guardrails, the new fan motor, the entire floor to ceiling. Gym has been painted, and possibly next week, we're going to tackle waxing the floors. All the floors have been waxed. This room has been painted.
Kitchen. Kitchen was painted.
Has been painted. Floors have been deep cleaned. Yeah, just eight weeks.
It looks weird that way, yeah.
What's that?
It looks amazing, right?
Yeah, thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Zach was bothering me about this the other day. All of the building things. Are we still working or are we going to be getting quotes for lighting for the parking lot? At some point?
Oh, yeah.
Not like today?
Yeah.
Does any tricks still have that yet? Does any tricks still on your list?
No, that's really.
That's bothering me.
That's a simple project that yes, we can. As of right now, everything kind of looks quiet other than solar for next year.
Okay.
We can definitely put that in the works.
Cool.
That would be something.
Okay, handbook revisions.
Okay. Patty is handing out just the revision part of the handbook. But I have on the screen here the whole handbook. And I will go through just the changes that we've, that we've made. Mr. Greve usually does this work, so I'll try my best. Let me make sure I'm, camera's good. I don't know if the camera will be able to see the TV. Why not? Why not? It's okay. You don't have to listen to me. Okay.
Do you want to go through the changes? Do you want that or are you good?
I'm good. I have it on my computer, so I'll be able to scroll. So we'll start with the table of contents. I, Mr. Greve and I both worked on this. He worked on it and I went in and I call myself a closer on just about everything, including the dishes at my house. So you'll see in the table of contents that obviously the student staff calendar was updated. We've added the generative artificial intelligence classwork and homework policy that is actually a district policy. They worked on that at the district level. And that's been included in the handbook. And as we scroll down, my welcome back letter change, that's been updated. Calendar's been updated. And then we'll go right into some of the changes. So the first change, I don't know where, I don't know what page numbers for you will be, but under communication, I believe this is page seven.
Six.
Six for them. A variety of ways that parents can remain well informed. I added the bridge instead of goes home. I added is emailed through one call now and paper copies are available upon request. We've not had a request for paper copies in years, but I wanted to make sure that that was put in there because it doesn't necessarily go home. It does go home, but it's more appropriate to say that it's emailed. And as we go down that page, at the very bottom, check out the Deerfield Community School website. I've linked that as well as the weekly updates include digital copies of the bridge. And it went on to say announcements. And I crossed out links to the parent portal unless not updated weekly. This is more like a weekly update. And not just library resources are available. There's all curriculum resources are available on the site. So I wanted to update that. And the next page starts with one call now. And down, you'll see under school board and DCS district policies, I've updated the link to the SAU. And I've also included the link directly to the Deerfield High School information. So when, when you're looking on this online, that link will bring you right to that page.
Has that been updated? I mean, I haven't looked at it recently, but we may want to look at that, Patty.
Click on it and see.
The high school.
See what it looks like.
Yeah, this is the hard part of SharePoint is that I, then I have to log in and I'll have a.
I wouldn't worry about that.
Two, twelve ticket. Yeah.
I just, I know the high school stuff used to be like stuff with the contracts and things like that, which may not be as helpful to people.
So if I go to the SAU website, it does have. And I think under here, let's see, high school information. With links.
It's right under learn more. It's like five down.
Okay, so that's, that's what it brings you to.
Yeah, I, I would say.
CDA information, CHS information.
Yeah. Want to just work with me to update what we have there? Just because I don't know that a lot, like this is what they're going to want to look for. They need high school stuff. Or like information about the school process. So like confusing. They may not be that interested in our old presentations about high school options and policies. You can have the policies.
Yeah.
Yeah, well.
And then I'll fix the link. I don't, a lot of the policies actually got uploaded to Google because SharePoint can be challenging for some people. I'll talk about that in a few minutes. Under volunteering, this section actually does need to be updated. There's a big section in there that each year designated staff member volunteer coordinator, PTO is involved. There's volunteer application. We haven't really done that since COVID. So I, then there's a link to the visitors and volunteers under policies, which that link will bring you directly down into that part of the handbook. So I, I would like to work with some folks about updating that. Well, I mean, volunteers do come in. We do have volunteers that come in and volunteer in the classroom. But there's not been a volunteer coordinator in a few years. We've not had an application. We do not have a volunteer handbook that's been updated. So I think, I think we just need to take a look at that procedure and, and. Nothing against the PTO. Were you going to say something?
The last time there was a volunteer coordinator, it was me. A long time ago.
And now look at her. She's the president. All right, so this, I bookmarked the next change. That's, this will not, I will delete these after I'm done, but I just figured it'd be easier just to bookmark to bring it right down to the next page. So this is the new generative artificial intelligence classwork and homework for SAU fifty-three. As I stated, this was worked on as an entire SAU with all our tech folks in the SAU, including Joshua. And he, they, they pulled together all of the best practices that are out there right now regarding AI.
And this board received this and approved it.
Uh-huh. Okay. And now it's in, and now it's in that handbook. All right, next change, we'll bring you down to policies, procedures, and routines. That originally just said procedures and routines, but this whole section also has policies. And you can see that the green part right here, policies, it will actually bring you to the Google Drive instead of to the SharePoint. I think Ashley.
So yeah, since I was going to mention that in policies, but I'm glad because I might have forgotten. Ashley, one of her summer projects, because it's, SharePoint has been such an issue, she set up a shared Google folder, public folder, and took every single school district, every single policy, and put them into a shared Google Drive. So now not only can you open them and share them when you get to that folder, there's a little, there's a little instruction at the top that if you change the view, you can see the list and it has the names, not just the titles. And then there's also the ability to open one. There, you can now arrow to the next policy quickly. So it's a huge improvement for the policies. Yeah.
Thank you.
Oh, thank you.
So every, everywhere where it says policies, that link will bring, I updated every area in the handbook that said policies. I updated it to bring you to the Google Drive.
Great. Thank you.
A little further down, the bus routes. I just wanted to add that updates will be, so beginning of the school year, updates will be emailed through the school year, throughout the school year as needed because the last few years I have had to update. It's not just available to the end of the year. It's updated throughout the year. And the routes are available in the office and also on the DCS website. And that link will bring you right to the bus information section of the DCS website. A little further down, cell phones must be in students backpack was added. And then it will be taken away by a teacher. I just said it will be brought to the main office. That seems aggressive language. Like every year, you try to clean up the language a little bit. So I just wanted to update that. This, this first offense, second offense, I think, was taken from, like if a kid brings in any kind of device, but this one was specific to cell phones. So I wanted to say instead of the item, we changed it to cellphone.
Or people aren't bringing payers anymore?
No, 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 nope. And then I added instead of taking away, brought to the, brought to the main office. Second offense, brought to the main office.
Are there any other items? And maybe it's addressed elsewhere in the handbook? Are there other like devices that kids have, like tablets or something that don't fall under here that need to be addressed?
Yeah, there's another section for that as well. That, I, I think I updated that as well to. I, I can find it for you.
Yeah, no, that's fine. I just want to make sure it's not specific only to cell phones and for those other things.
Tablets, Game Boys, that kind of stuff.
Switches.
Switches, yeah. And I'm beating myself at saying Game Boy.
Might be a cool intro.
So then again, I just wanted to point out, under retention, I, I, I changed that to policies. So when you click on that, it will go directly to. It'll go directly to the handbook, I mean, to policies. Yeah.
I, I tried that and it's working. I think it's a good decision. But at the same time, it opens like the whole page of policies. And I wonder whether you could at least justify which one.
I can't. I tried. I tried to do specific retention policy and it's just, the PDF is just, it brings you just to that drive. It does not bring you to the specific.
I don't mean the link. I mean, just even name it. Which policy are they looking for?
Yeah, and I did, I under, yeah, I could, I will update that one. But yes, I, down further in the policy section, I did name it for what they can, to look for.
Okay.
I'll show that to you. And visitor, again, volunteers up, to be updated. Persons wishing to volunteer, should complete a volunteer application. I just highlighted that in red so that we would be able to take a look at that and update it and see what makes the most sense now that we are past, we've passed COVID times and volunteers still do come in and what makes the most sense.
What does it mean when they say, "One district is permitted to decide the assistance of a volunteer should request a volunteer through cross-isterate channels"? So it means they have to come to you and say, hey, I need help in the classroom. You're going on a trip. Can you ask for parents or am I just going to show what that means?
I, I don't know either. I, this is.
This is what it was?
That was the language. Yeah, and we can take a look at all that language and, because teachers don't, do not.
Yeah, that's why I wanted to remember that. It just seems that's not what teachers usually do, so.
Yeah, that's been there for years. I can, I'll highlight it and, and look at that as language that needs to be updated. Does that sound good? Update that? All right. The next change was just that dances, they're, they're announced in the bridge and I will put a link directly to the DCS, DCS events calendar. So when something is put onto the DCS, it goes directly to that calendar on, online. And a little further down, this link to health forms, I added that in there. That link will bring you directly to the nurse, nurses page on the website. And there is all kinds of forms on there that are linked for people who might be looking for something like that. The section of reading and math specialists did not include the math program. So we've added that for kindergarten through eighth grade, language arts, and math program. And then, then we get into academic probation. So this is the middle school section of, of the handbook. For anybody who's new to the board or wasn't aware, we, we have a specific section for middle school, which includes information about the discipline code, information about major and minor infractions, the academic probation procedures. And we send this home, with this section home, with our middle school students and with a paper for, to sign. Mr. Greve manages that. The kids have to make sure that they get, that they sign it and that their parent also signs it. So beyond just receiving the handbook, they also receive this middle school section. This, the, the academic probation procedure was updated this summer. We had about eleven staff members that came for a couple of days in July. And we took a look at the current probation procedure and talked about the things that are working for, the things that are working, things that are not working, what are some strengths? What are some areas that they notice? What are some high priority needs? And basically what came out of it was an updated academic probation. So we defined probation as the intent is to provide students with support and intervention when tools are not utilized, procedures set forth are intended to set students up for success and foster academic growth. Then it goes on to say that a student will be placed on academic probation if he or she has at least two total summative assessments in any classes. So the previous language said in two different classes. And what we were finding was that a student might have like two or three summatives missing in one class, but it's because it's not two classes, they're not on academic probation. So the team, the team that I worked, the administration worked with really wanted to, to update that to say that if they have two summatives that, in any class, that either received an insufficient evidence. So a summative is a final project or a test or a quiz maybe. The student on academic probation will have the two total summatives with either an IE or they've received a zero, or one, or two. And the student's corresponding work did not meet expectations. So the previous procedure was that students had to have all their formative work done as well to be able to reassess. That still remains the same. And so they received a grade below two or the summative was not completed. And we've, we've found that with students that they just don't complete their summative. So we've included that in the language as well. And something that we wanted, that the, that the team really wanted to bring in the fact was a procedure where if, if a student is at risk of being on academic probation, that they will receive a flag notification on their summative so that parents and guardians are aware that they, they might have received an IE, a zero, one, or a two. And because they didn't do their formative work leading up to that summative, they, they might not have an opportunity to reassess. So they wanted to let parents know that they would be flagged for probation. And the team worked on a form that would be attached. It just says name of the summative, what the score was. The summative assessment flagged you for probation due to blank, missing formatives like homework and classwork leading up to the summative. Please review in Alma for information and feel free to contact the advisor or the teacher. So, yep.
Oh, wait a second.
Okay. One of the, one of the, the big things that we wanted to work on was really supporting students prior to this. So we defined probation and what that would look like, but also we wanted to put more emphasis on supporting the student before they got to a probation. So a lot of our discussion centered around that. So what we are going to start doing is, as you know, missing assignments are listed in Alma. And I kept that note in there. I always try to make note of this and mention it to parents and guardians because if you look at Alma on your phone or a mobile device of some sort, you don't see as much information as if you were on a laptop or, or a desktop of some sort. There's, so we asked that you use a laptop or desktop to have an accurate screenshot of all the information that's available. And Alma teachers put in notes, they put in comments, and you cannot see that on the phone. So basically what will happen is that every Thursday during advisory, advisory is every day this year. So is, so what I need, the wind block of time will also be every day. Every Thursday, students will, during advisory time, will meet with their advisors to review goals and any missing formative work that they have and plan to, or participate in whatever supports are available. So a lot of the teams, the grade level teams, offer a flex time once a week. They offer study lab, extra help. There's always teachers available during study lab. We, our, our teachers, we're going to rotate through on PD Wednesdays, which is professional development Wednesday. We're going to rotate through our middle school teachers so that there's always a middle school teacher. If, you know, if there's a staff meeting, there's always going to be a middle school teacher or two upstairs with students that need some support. So instead of coming to staff meetings, that's what they're. And then extra help on lunch, on an as needed basis. Parents and guardians and students will get weekly notifications. And summatives will be flagged, which will require the parent signatures or parent guardian signature. Um, yep.
So this is, this is great. And, and I, I guess my question is, a lot of support, which is, which is fantastic. Two things. One is, as part of that previous form you were talking about, where after a summative that goes home with a zero, one, or two, there's the form. Is there, I didn't hear you say that, but I assume there's some information at the bottom that would say something like, to the parents, you know, if your student would like additional support next Wednesday afternoon.
Yeah. For support and intervention, please stay after school this upcoming Wednesday. Parent signature, student signature, and I'm available to stay Wednesday, the date, and until three forty-five.
Perfect, awesome. And then number two is, as a board, can we support? Would it be taking advantage, I think it goes to me this year, newish, so maybe there's some data collecting to begin with. But if, if a stipend or something were helpful to make it four days, or five days a week, could we stipend that position to be able to provide? Again, if students. To be able to provide, again, if students are not taking advantage or parents aren't taking advantage, then it's not a thing. But if, if parents would say, Monday instead would be better, I probably the board would support a stipend to, I think, to, to support that. Our students who are wanting to, you know, get off probation and all that stuff, some maybe would be working together as a blend of money.
All right.
Thank you.
So every Thursday after, in meeting with their advisors, students will be given their missings list, which students, is currently what they're doing. They get a list of, of any formative assignments that are missing. And then parents and guardians and students will be notified if their student has three or more missings. And they will also be notified if their, if their student is a zero hero, which is a tradition here. If you have no missings, parents and guardians have always been notified about zero hero. I shouldn't say always, the last couple of years. And if students have missings or revisions, they are, they are now at risk of probation. And they would not be eligible to assess on a summative score of IE, which is insufficient evidence, zero, one, or two. So they know that they, if, as they're working on their formative assignments, if they're not fixing those assignments or being more thorough with them, you know, they get something back and say revisions needed. If they don't go back in and revise that more thoroughly and hand it back in, then they will be at risk for, for, to be on probation. Summatives that are flagged for probation will require student, a parent guardian signature. And I mentioned the probation flagged slip. And also, always, 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 that if a student received a summative score of two or less and, and they were eligible to reassess and got a two again, and that was their best work, they will not be placed on probation. Teachers are very good about that. And Mr. Bree always goes around and talks to every single kid and every single teacher about, you know, before he goes to the kid, he goes to the teacher. Okay, where are we at with this, these students? Goes to case managers, talks to them as well. So it's a very thorough process to make sure that when kids are on probation, they're on probation for a reason. And then if, if, once a student is on probation, students will then meet with their advisor and teacher to create a goal setting probation plan. They also work on the probation plan, which is, if, once you've been placed on probation, they will move to their advisor. Then they have to meet with the teacher to talk about what was the summative that there was flagged, what were the missing formatives in that section. And after every, that meeting with each teacher, they put the date and the signature and then what did I, they write, what did I discuss with my teacher? So we're trying to, you know, get kids to, to focus more on improving their, their habits, basically. We did, the, the teachers were, were very firm on extending academic probation to two weeks. They currently was from Thursday to Thursday or six days or something like that because they really felt strongly that they wanted to work on developing some of those. During probation, working on, you know, improving their skills moving forward. Like how can I track more, work more effectively? What can I work on with my time management? What are some organization habits that I need to improve on? What are some study habits I need to improve on? How can I ask questions? How can I, how can I advocate for myself if I'm not understanding something? Getting academic help when needed? How to use notes, attention strategies? And redoing any poorly done formative assignments that ended up getting them on probation? So teachers will be working with students. This, we just put a lot more support in during these, during probation time. And at the end of the academic, two academic weeks, students will come off probation and if they follow the corresponding plan. So the advisors, teachers, parents, guardians are all involved in all of this. So. And, and teachers are looking for improvement, you know, a decrease in missing assignments, improvement in effort, improvement in grades, improvement in class participation, improvement in work habits. So we're working on defining what that would look like. And then as you go on, the previous.
Yeah, of course. So I recognize this might not be the entire probation. Is it, is what academic probation is defined in the handbook? Like what things they would not be able to do? Like sort of what it means to be on probation?
Yes. Yes.
Yeah, I see there's like the end of the year field trip.
It's on the back page or something?
Yeah, it's on page fourteen.
Yeah.
Fourteen.
Academic probation, we're after two weeks. While on probation.
Okay. Yes, thank you. Couldn't find that.
Perfect. I also do that too. I had to move past the, I was moving ahead. Sorry.
That's okay. It's okay.
I, I like the framing of the language and saving that first part from the end because it should be sort of positive.
Yes, for sure.
The point is to encourage students to, you know, develop the learning tools and all of that. Yes, there's repercussions with this.
Totally. I just wanted to make sure it was clear that like what the repercussions were in case someone was trying to say, well, this is not outlined in the handbook.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. Also outlined in the handbook, just to quickly go over, we do outline what formative assessments are, estimates of, of a time of homework, and then what summative assessments are. So, and we also have another document that is updated that this information goes even more in depth. And we also talk about it on, we have a middle school open house night at the very, very beginning of September for sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. So in the past two years, we've met with fam, all families in the gym to start to kick everything off. And then they go off to their individual grades, sixth grade team, seventh grade team. Eighth grade team follows up with their information that is important to their classroom. So yes, and then, so the next procedure that has been updated is the reassessment procedure. So if a student earns a score of one or two on a summative, he or she may reassess within that 10 school days as long as the student has completed and turned in work that meets expectations, including all formatives and leading up to the summative. And the student may not reassess if they do not meet the above criteria. Now, last two academic weeks is not allowed, and this is where Nate just brought up, after school activities, school dance, also during flex time or advisory magnitude. So a lot of times, I know eighth grade did this last year. They would have, once a week, they had a flex time. And if students had work that they needed to finish up on, they, they saved and worked on whatever they needed to while the, while other students who had done their work and finished were able to participate in flex time, which might mean different activities that are happening, playing basketball in the gym or going outside to the outdoor classrooms and that type of thing.
And that's only for flex time, not like recess?
Correct. Correct. Yeah. No, if a student is going to stay in, recess is not taken, it's, they have, maybe, might have a working lunchtime that they go off for, but.
Okay.
And then other important notes, students missing three or more assignments, not completed a summative in a given week, the student will provide an opportunity to complete any, I just said that, any, any missing time during flex work. And that's, parents and student and parent guardian will be informed on Wednesday or Thursday by the student's advisor, which is something that we still do, we do right now, that they will be using that time to complete their work. And students have two days to make up time of, make a temp for every day perhaps. And that remains the same. And then the previous language so that you can compare it to. So that's the, that was the major change, especially in that section of the middle school. But there's other changes. Does anybody have any questions before we go on?
I think it's great. I mean, I think I'm, I'm really glad to see all the extra support outlined.
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm.
It's great.
So then we go down, this, this section also is in the, the cell phone section is also in this part of the handbook. And just so you, I can see right here, Kendra, there's electronics. Students who choose to bring laptops, calculators, game systems or other handhelds devices, the item will be taken away, given back. So first event, second event, third event. And then, so I just updated the cell phone section of that as well. And then we go down to school board policies. And here's Nate, here Nate is where the policy is linked here. And then underneath is JRA, JRAA, JRAR, Student Records and Access. So that's the one they'll be looking for when they go to, if they want to see what that policy is.
That's helpful because the, the letters are not.
helpful.
Right. So you'll do the same thing for the one up?
Correct. I will all take that one, yeah.
Looking for this particular letter policy.
Yep. For sure.
Yes. That's why she made the, where you do grid viewer, list view. He said here, list view. You see the letter and the name of the policy, which is so much better than. Who would know what the heck?
JCA.
We might. And that's it. That's sad that we probably do remember now.
Cool. Yeah. What do you need from approval?
So this is minor. And on focus, we changed what it stands for.
Sure.
So it is now focus on community and school. Now, the letters don't match. We know it. We like the sound of this one better. Still has focus, isn't it?
This is acronym four.
Focus on community and school.
It was you.
The other thing, you. People say, what do you mean? I don't know.
You actually really like yours a couple of times.
Thank you, Nate, for catching that.
Yeah.
I didn't have any focus on the handbook.
I'll move to the board.
Second. Any discussion?
I think once I, once we figure out the volunteers, I'll bring that information to the board so you know. And you can, we can go through approval process again.
Sounds good. All in favor of approving the changes to the handbook? Aye. Any opposed?
Okay.
Cool. Thank you for school of these.
You're very welcome.
Okay. Twenty-four, twenty-five is board goals. Hope everyone brought ideas for board goals. That's okay. Oh, thank you.
Was it one for last year?
No. I need, I think there probably will be some that we are on the. So these are the, the twenty-three, twenty-four school board goals, some of which are not as relevant anymore because we have accomplished them. But so this is sort of our opportunity to brainstorm and come up with a draft of goals so we can get them approved. All know where we're going. So does anyone have ideas of what they would like to see as a board goal?
I would like to see something about academic excellence. Like, you know, where are we in, in certain, like new math moves? Over time, are we getting better compared to this course or something? Also, we had a new math program that we approved last year. Let's know how that's doing. So I guess a focus on like academic excellence.
So, I didn't really write anything down. Yeah, no, that's fine. So we have, you know, we had student achievement as a goal last year. So we need, and we did create presentations. Do you think that would, if we kept that as a goal for this year? Having presentations, including topics such as test results and progress on the school.
Do you guys know what she said? Yeah, because I know that's something that the community has mentioned. That's why I was wanting to know it more. I'm also wondering as far as this, I know Kristen's very good at telling us of what's been going on at the school. And, and I don't know if they would do it. I wonder if we could ask teachers to come on occasion to meetings as a, either grade level or as a unit? And not, I'm trying to think of the best way to explain what I could want from them. But for them to tell us what's going on in their classrooms and even what is working, what isn't. And maybe that would help us to understand more what's happening in the classrooms. I mean, it'd have to be more spelt out. But I feel like getting it from the teachers, if they're willing. And I know we can't just say, we need you to come. But I think they're in the trenches. They're the ones with the kids every day. They're the ones using the programs every day. And again, that's not taking away from having Kristen report to us on what's going on. But they're the ones actually doing it every day. And I wonder if that would help us in understanding more what's going on.
I might just ask, I guess, to what end? Like why, yes, there is a lot of information out there that I think, you know, if you're curious to know. But at the same time, as a board member at the thirty thousand board level, what, what am I going to do about answering someone this way? And maybe that's not the point. But in terms of a board goal for the year, what would the goal for us be coming from that?
I think it would be if things come up that are, like if things are going well, that's good. We know money's being spent in the right way. If things are not going well, are there things that we can do? So I think about when I went to Co Ground and they had all the different school districts report. One school district said behavior is a big, big issue. So the school board worked with the school and they hired a behavior specialist to help the school. And that's the kind of thing we can do. So if we know that that's a problem. So I look at it like, how well are we doing academically? What, what are the, the cell block? And is there something that we as a board can do to help?
And, and hearing from the teachers would be different than hearing from the principal or the superintendent? Why would we keep, why would we, like, in terms of sort of how, you know, chain of community or whatever you want to call it, why is that definitely hearing from? If we need to work on behavior, we don't work on behavior, the superintendent won't work on behavior. And how, I mean, is part of the goal really like, does the system working better or something? Or is there something else that?
Now, I'm thinking of the system. I was only thinking of the teachers. But I, I hear what Nancy's saying. Sometimes you hear things differently when it's the teachers talking to you. Because it's their ones that write their in the classroom. But I'm not married to that.
Yeah, but even just like how you said, the math program. And I wasn't on the board at the time when the math committee came, but I was in the audience and listening to them talk about what was happening in math and what they would like to change. I found it very helpful. And I guess that's more of what, if they came in and said, hey, we've been using this writing program, for example, and we really see it working well for the kids. Or, you know, we've been using this writing program. Because, I mean, I know our goal is not, is more policy and all that. But it's also our responsibility to make sure the school is running well. And for me, that information is part of if our school is running well.
And approving the budget.
Right.
So we want to do approving the budget of things that are working well.
Yeah.
So if, if we were to say that we would expect to see three or four visits per year from teachers with updates on X, Y, Z, maybe it's in the math program. And is it something that we would request? Or is it something that, what does the school want to share with us?
I think the teachers is the best way, don't you, Nancy? That's kind of like putting a lot of pressure on the teachers.
Yeah, that's right.
So, I mean, I, I know I was petrified going to school board when I was a teacher.
I know we all, we're very friendly people.
I know, I know, but you don't know that. It's like, right, a school board, you know? And I mean, I had kids come and present to the school. I mean, I was in front of the school enough to get more comfortable. But I can remember being very scared. And I think that's kind of a lot of pressure, but maybe there's other ways to do it.
Yeah. I guess I just feel like if we wanted, we want to know that they are improving. And I'm not sure that just always having a piece of paper that's a depth or test score went up or their test score went down is telling us how it's working.
So maybe, so maybe it's what you're looking for is anybody to come and tell us what the test scores are. But you really want more insight into the teachers that are working with it and how they feel that that's working. So. So it doesn't have to be a grade level.
No, I thought it'd be more comfortable coming as a, you know, how was your grade level? And just, I guess I just keep thinking of when the math teachers came. And I felt that that was really, as an audience member, I had worked here for a long time, but hadn't heard something quite like that of a group of teachers. And I just felt that was great information for the town to receive. You know, sitting there as a town member and saying, oh, okay. They didn't like what was working.[1762.88] They didn't like what was working and they're trying to find something better.
And I know we're working on new programs in literacy as well, right?
Yeah.
They're definitely trying out some new ones.
Or maybe we just continued, maybe it's the literacy team comes or something. I guess, I just feel that I'd like to know what's going on. I do.
I was gonna say that. I totally agree with you. I'm just wondering about the vehicle. But I, we used to, yeah, we have a, we have a director of curriculum and instructor and assessment, like, as an SAU. And so we used to get visits from, and that was, he was the presenter. And he would, and with him came, you know, teachers who wanted to come and be part of the presentation. We get these presentations with more of the behind the scenes, like, here's this new program, here's how it's been implemented, here's how the board could help it, X, Y, or Z. And teachers, some teachers are not comfortable doing that, but it was, it's the director of curriculum who was doing the presentation. And I haven't seen that for a number of years. So that might be a way that we could, I totally agree with you.
Patty, is that something, I mean, that, that the director of curriculum instructions here a lot and really knows what's going on with the literacy?
I think Amy would love to do that. And she is working with teams. You know, we, we absolutely, it has been a goal to have more presentations and more staff come. And then obviously during COVID, we spent all our time interviewing about whatever. And then all of your focus, or a great deal of your focus has been on all of high school stuff.
That's why I like to add that, yeah.
Right. And now I think those, and then there was the building project. And so there's been a lot of big stuff on your plate. So I like getting focused back on academics and coming up, brainstorming some ways. But, and I think that's a great idea because I think teachers would feel more comfortable coming with Amy. Instead of like, you know, you guys are gonna go and talk to the school board, Amy's gonna talk to you and bring the teachers and invite them to be part of the conversation. So, I mean, I almost think that we could still keep number one A high. If we create a schedule of presentations focusing on student achievement and curriculum, do we?
The triangle is a similar number, I think.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, something that I'm very cognizant of is requesting people to be here on page.
Yeah, and I agree.
Yeah. Like, I wouldn't want it to be like every single month, we're forcing hours.
Sounds good. There could be like one in the fall, one in January, one in the spring. And then it'll be a different topic. I mean, a different subject matter.
I think we just, we need to actually schedule them in advance. I think we kept going off the scheduling and then it's budget season, then delivery session, and then it's the new board. And so I think, I think I would propose that we keep one A up as a goal. And add achievement and curriculum. And then sort of let Principal Withy or whomever, the curriculum directors, sort of decide what they would like to present on. I know we did have a very good presentation about test scores. And I would like to see that again because, you know, changes every year, but it was sort of comparing with state averages and sort of our history of test scores and where we might be improving or et cetera.
And I'd like it to be one subject matter at a time. Like maybe we literacy one time, math another time, and maybe we could do both science and social studies or, you know, I don't wanna, you know me. I wanna do both science. I'm trying to be nice, adding in social studies. But, no, I love social studies. But I think a lot of times we focus too much on just math and we need to focus on the other two.
Yeah. I think that sounds good. So does anyone have, does everyone want to keep one A high? Because I like that. Okay.
I like B too, but I'm wondering if we can make that a separate goal and do it in a different way. Like, you know, when we had the world culture guide, that was really interesting. Let me talk about some of the things that he was doing. I also, for the, for the C, I mean, I know I've talked to a couple of new guys here and there about this, but I was wondering if that's something we could offer, like a little stipend for a high school student to take on the job of finding out what's going on in their high school, of students from Deerfield. You know, someone who's maybe interested in journalism or whatever. And we could, like, hire them, not for a lot of money, obviously, but for a little bit to write about it or to, so like a newsletter, like a little, just quick little thing. This is what's going on with the Deerfield kids at Co Ground. This is what's going on with Deerfield kids at Concord High. I, I don't know if we'd get a student who'd be interested in doing that, but we might.
We have, yes.
Have we?
Yeah.
Yeah. We had a couple, yeah. Yeah. So I mean, and you don't have to, it doesn't have to be a lot of money.
Would it, would you be looking for them to come to a board meeting or for them to publish something that we would then put on?
I'm open to either way. I, I kinda, I kinda like it either way.
They did come to board meetings and do presentations, like PowerPoint presentations with. It wasn't so much data, it was more like the events of what's been going on at Concord High.
I mean, I do like the publication because then it could go, we could add it to the communicator for, you know, like, if they do it like three times a year, you know?
Yeah, I mean, we could, if they make a present, a PowerPoint, we could certainly put it on our Facebook or.
Yeah. I'm just trying to get it more assess, yeah, making it accessible to people. But, did I say bridge?
You said the communicator.
Communicator. I'm showing my age, sorry. Yeah, okay. But I'm just thinking of reading, you know, something that goes out to, I mean, to, that parents would see. Because, you know, there are a lot of people, not many people come to our meetings and not many people watch the videos. I'd like to have a way that gets to maybe more people.
So do we want to focus C on having high school purchase, high school students participate at board meetings? And like presenting at board meetings? Because this feels big and like a little nebulous.
Yeah.
And I think.
I personally prefer them to write something. We could do something that, that's my, I don't know. I like the writing idea because it's like, hey, these kids are in this sports and these kids are in that sports. And that's something we can just right away put out to the public. We can put it on our Facebook page. We can send it with the bridge.
Yeah, I think, yeah.
Well, you're, I think you're, you're also asking for a different type of student. A student that's willing to come and talk to us and do a PowerPoint presentation might be different than someone who's willing to gather information and write an article. That, they're not the same necessarily.
One of the, the, the pieces that went with the, I mean, so this is a high school student we're talking about here. One of the, nothing against high school students, I have one. But one of the two.
Two.
One of the, one of the pieces that went with the Concord presentation was that they made the presentation in conjunction with another, the same presentation that we gave to the Concord board. And I think there was, I assume there was an advisor or like a faculty member at the, at the school that was working with them. A little bit of quality control. So like, if we're talking about hiring a high school student to go out and write something that we're going to publish, I would be a little questionable, like, what, what are we just not going to publish here? And so then are we doing, is somebody?
Well, we'd have to have somebody, obviously.
Oversighting.
Right, some oversight. Versus if we do, and I assume, you know, if this is happening with the Concord board, I assume, we have, you know, something that's all at the same time being, being produced with the oversight of a high school teacher, I would assume the same thing would happen around maybe. I know it's not in Concord. That might be just sort of a, in terms of like, we're publishing that might be better for Concord.
Yeah, I would be a little skeptical of just getting something and immediately throwing it out without the board having sort of reviewed it to make sure it's like the content that we would want to put out. I mean, I don't know. Are you looking for them to track down just what Deerfield students are doing at the high school? Or are you just looking to know what's going on at the school?
Right, because that's a different. Yeah, I was thinking, I was thinking of highlighting Deerfield students.
And that's, that would be more difficult.
We've been asked that a lot.
Yeah, and something that schools have been proud of, though, is not knowing where they live. And I, I mean, I know at our own, at Pembroke Academy, it's all about Pembroke Academy. And you're a Spartan and you're part of the school. It's not, how are the, tell me where the Allen sun gets from, how are they doing? So I think about it from like the SAU perspective and now take that out to our high schools that we're sending students to, see what that looks like.
I don't know. I don't know. I don't know. I mean, it's just, it's just come up at a lot of meetings with people like, "Well, how many kids are in sports?" And then we are in clubs. And, yeah.
It's just, it's hard data to collect.
Yeah.
Because you don't, you don't book it, book it at that way when you're working in the school. So, you know.
But that's why I was thinking Deerfield kids, because I know Deerfield.
Yeah, they would just know from small classes, yeah.
Yeah.
I, I still think that a goal along those lines would be good. We could still focus this language a little bit better. But we need those details to be decided and determined. But people, goal language could be like improving specific high school, I don't know what, information, something like that. And then we could spend a couple months trying to figure out that.
Yeah, I mean, we could do like, improve visibility with activities at the high school. Sort of we want to focus on activities or, I don't know.
I mean, the, the way it is written here says student success is progress and opportunities at DCS and high school. And we talked about postings on the website and Facebook page. I mean, I want to be clear, I would never give anybody the opportunity to throw something out without us looking at it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. But it does get more complicated if we, if we had a board after review it, then it's not quite as time it is. Someone just writing something and then we post it. If we as a board are going to look at it and approve it, then we're not really saving any time by them.
I guess I wasn't also, I wasn't necessarily thinking of it coming from the school board. I was thinking of it coming from like a school reporter.
Yeah, I think Amy's a company that we're paying them though.
I don't love hiring them. It's, that would be bad.
We ask kids to do a lot. And most of the kids, you know, we have student reps on the school boards at the high school level and they, they're not compensated. It's just like an activity for that, but.
You might want to make.
You might want to start thinking about kids you might be recruiting.
I know.
So if you want to pay them a stipend, is there some type of, sign, something you're going to agree?
I don't think we can control high school fees.
Yeah, no. Something sort of.
Give them a little.
Yes. I also think, you know, there, a kid might sign up and have really great intentions and want to do it and then, and then be overburdened and have a lot, a bunch of activities that they're doing and then can't do it. I, I wouldn't want to create like added stress for a high school student just because you want to know what they're up to.
If there was, if it wasn't just one person who's been with the whole year, if it was maybe two kids, we would have two reports.
It doesn't have to be an either or either. I mean, we can have the student who wants to, you know, the one that, I like the idea if that's what they did before, they worked at Concord, they came up with a joint presentation. I think that's a great idea. I'm sure Co Ground would be very willing to do that as well. I mean, I think that's a wonderful idea. I was just trying to think of a way, because we had a lot of people ask about how successful are the kids at the different high schools? What are they doing? What are they involved in?
Yeah, no, I think it's a great idea and I think we should add it. We don't need to solve all of the world problems tonight.
Okay, so we'll just leave that, like, makes that, we leave this goal and we'll think about it.
Yeah. Okay. Okay. What else? What other goals are we interested in? I will say last year, there was a goal that we decided not to include, but I think we should think about whether or not to include it, is the State Road property. I know there was a discussion at some point about solar on it with town leases.
Right, without even asking us. Yes, and I went back and got the Warren article and it specifically says.
Yes. But I don't know if we want to explore what to do with State Road property or if that is not a priority for us at this point. I assume you both have the State Road.
Yeah, right.
Okay. Yeah. You must know. But that, I just wanted to point out that that was a goal, a previous goal that we did not choose to cut last year. Did anyone feel strongly about that?
Yeah, there's been a lot, the energy committee had talked about it and it was something that was, we're not going to include in our plans. Oh, and I mean, we, I think we still need to deal with the space issues.
Yes. I think some of these projects can be removed. Solar.
Supporting local agriculture community. I mean, we got the grant for the school, the guardian school grant. And there, I was gonna ask, I don't know if I can ask tonight, but there's another grant that I was gonna ask if it would be okay if I put in for. It's a really simple one. I'll just send it out.
Yeah, there, I said.
It's very, very simple. It's just like for a thing that, it's for milk. It's to get the kids to drink more milk and it's for a blender. You get a blender and like milk and, you know, but you get a free blender at the cafeteria. And I know that, the, I'm sorry, I'm like, I'm losing all my thoughts right here, but Gail was very, very interested in it. Very interested in it. She was like, very salivating. But I don't think that.
That's fine. Why don't you just, can I put Patty about it?
Okay. I think the deadline is November. That's why I'm bringing it up.
So do we, Amy, I'll start. Do we want to keep three A in all of these projects still except for the solar project?
Yeah, I, I think that the space needs one is a, is a topic that we've obviously come up recently.
Yes.
Does this get replaced with just a space needs question or keep it as like individual projects?
Yeah, I mean, I think that's a good question. You know, I do think Chris is quite on top of the big projects and he does have sort of a timeline that I'm operating with. So I wonder if those don't need to be board goals, if we can, if we just want to have a space needs goal.
Might be able to put more of our focus on it if we want.
So we could do separate ones?
Yeah, I think we can just do like separate space needs. So the process, we're obviously brainstorming tonight. I last time took a stab at drafting them and I'll bring it, the board to draft and then we can add or approve if that works for everyone.
The high school, is that?
I personally don't want it as a goal this year.
And it's fine, but it's something, no, I know, but it's, these are three-year.
I know these and we're gonna need to, this will be our first year if we make it a goal for next year.
So it could be a goal for next year. That's fine. That's, I just, I need in the timeline.
If I don't have to talk about high school options for a year, that would be very.
Fine with me. I just don't want, I just, I needed to understand the timeline of these goals, so.
The contract starts in September.
Okay.
So it's, and it's a three-year contract.
Yeah, this will be year one.
Okay.
I think.
We definitely have to do something here too.
We will definitely do something here to, right, though, we're, we have less crunch because we can automatically renew for a year or two years. But, yes, we will need to address it at some point. I vote not this year. Do we still want anything about nutrition or supporting local agriculture?
I think it's worth continuing to look into.
Do we want it as a goal?
I think there's always opportunities that are coming out.
There was also just, I don't know if it was signed by the governor, but I think there was legislation passed in Concord this year about agricultural connections with schools. I, don't quote me on that, but I'm fairly sure.
Right, that would be, that would be one of the next connections. What'd be nice would be to do the, like, they had that grant last year and then when we looked into it, we found out that we weren't even, we didn't even qualify, which we thought we did, but we didn't. But if we could like make connections with local farms to buy food from them, that would be great.
Okay. Any other ideas that people want to discuss? No, I know.
We've been having music all evening.
A really diverse range of music. Okay. Any, any new ideas that people want to float?
We don't have to recycle, we have new things. Speaking of recycling, composting is a big part of the grant. Big cup for the garden. Awesome.
No? Okay. I will create a draft. And then. And then meeting over there. At our next business meeting. Um, climate culture survey results.
Did we take those off? Don't even want to jump in?
Wait, what am I looking at?
It's on the agenda.
It is on the agenda.
I must have the old one. Okay, did they get put in the drive?
No.
I thought we took it off because.
Yeah.
Sorry, I'll put them in the next meeting. This is the old one, it doesn't have the zoom link on it.
Yeah, that's the old one, and we, yeah, and we took it off.
Yes. We'll add it to another.
I will put it on in the drive for two weeks. I'll try to get them in right away so you can look at them.
I, this agenda is copied from the drive, so I don't know.
That's fine, we just, we added in.
Link, yeah, you know, this, must, they both must be in there then Patty, because.
That's fine.
Okay, sorry.
No, that's fine. Um, enrollment update.
Oh, is that me?
I don't know.
There's a color copy for you. Um. We are sitting at five hundred ten students. We have, that includes preschool now, last enrollment update, I did not have preschool numbers for you. Our kindergarten classes are at seventeen, seventeen, eighteen. And um, we have um, seven students have withdrawn, three are going to either charter school or private school, four are moving. Uh, we've, during this enrollment period from the end of June, uh, in kindergarten, we've had eight students enroll um, from the numbers that we had uh, back in June. And then first through fifth grade, we've had seven students and seven students sixth through eighth grade. So we've had, seven plus seven plus eight. Fifteen twenty-two. And I'm trying to think of anything, anything else that I need to, you want me to highlight?
Do you find any change in the grades of the, the students that left to go to charter private school, for each of the?
Um. I'm trying to visualize this, get the, the chart that Candy fills out. I believe it was a fifth, fourth grader and then a sixth grader and a, and a seventh grader. No, two sixth graders. Hmm.
You said these numbers were since June?
Yeah, during the summer block, this is, this was the addition during the summer block.
So the current kindergarten numbers are pretty consistent with the other upper grades in terms of size.
Hmm, we're up to fifty-two. That might change, we have a few um, that haven't finished the enrollment process. We've had some, you know, we seem to, one student seems to leave and another student seems to come in. Um, so um, I'll have a more firm update again um, for you, beginning of September and then on October, the October first, we always have to um, give enrollment to the state for October first, so. So it will not be the last time you see this.
Anyone have questions about enrollment numbers? Retainage. So each year when the books are closing, um, the board needs to take another vote on retainage. Whatever you had retained for last year gets automatically put back in the pot and you have to take new action. Um, so last year you retained two sixty-five, nine fifty-three. Um, you have. Yes, you are able to retain up to um, three thirty-five, two fifty. So you would need to decide if you want to retain the same amount and turn back um, approximately three, three hundred and thirty-seven to the town. You can add to the two sixty-five, you can turn it all back, um, that's at the board's discretion.
Can you explain to me what can we use, we change for?
It's um, for, it's basically for an emergency if you run out of funds. So when we were running a deficit all year, if we didn't get that straight by the end of the year, we would have been able to use the retainage. Um, otherwise we can't overexpend on our appropriations. So that was a warrant article years ago, it has to be put before the voters to allow for the retainage. The percentage that you can retain was increased by statute. Um, so there's a formula that you use to figure out what your retainage can be, which is the number that Amber gives me um, to bring to you. And that number this year that you could retain up to three hundred and thirty-five thousand.
And so we used last?
You did not, nope.
So then what happens?
So it, you have to take action every fiscal year, you can't just carry it forward. You have to take, you could say, we're comfortable with our retainage number, we're gonna vote the same exact number, or you could give more back for taxes. You could keep more of a retainage if you felt like you wanted more of a balance in that fund um, for emergency.
So we were sweating it this year.
We were sweating it, so you're, Amber hasn't closed the books yet, so you'll get the final numbers, but um, we were in about, for an expenditure deficit, we were at like seven hundred and fifty-six thousand, but the revenue appropriation was like one point one million because we took some money out of trust funds for projects. Um, so you actually have a fund balance of three hundred and thirty-seven thousand. If you aimed, if you added that to the retainage that has to come back in, that's about just over six hundred thousand. So you can. So basically it's take, keep three, give three back, you can give all six back and have no retainage backup. It's the board's discretion.
We've usually kept about two hundred and fifty or so, maybe three hundred thousand every year, just in case.
And that, I mean, that can, you just get, sometimes one kid has to go to a thousand different placements and that's, that's it, ooh, that's the money right there.
An argument for giving more back is that obviously we know that the tax impact isn't biggest here, there's gonna be a bigger one coming, another big one coming in December. Um, and so maybe a little bit of lowering the taxes, that's what this could do. But then we run the risk that if we don't have that back up, then if something happens, then we have other ways.
Then we're coming. But what we didn't use, like that, what you held last year, what we didn't use, is what?
And I, I feel that one really.
I guess I don't understand.
It goes back, like right around now, it goes back to town to use.
It just automatically goes back.
Just back to town.
Okay, alright.
If we wanted, if we want it back, we have to then use it out of this news or something.
Yeah, okay, that's what I was, okay.
It doesn't stay in a little thing.
No, it only stays.
It's there all year and if we need it, we use it. If we don't use it, it automatically goes back to the town.
Unless you vote to keep some.
Yes.
Well, it's not keeping, it's more like taking it out of the news or it's kind of like.
So if we, if, two sixty-five, nine fifty-three, we said that goes back to the town, we still have a surplus of three hundred.
I just remembered that you had the one hundred and fifty thousand dollar special trust fund that you would fund out of that money too.
Of three hundred.
The negative is a hundred and fifty. Oh, does it get, does the trust fund get funded out of the two sixty-five?
No, out of the three thirty.
So if you, if you took your fund balance prior to retainage, it was three thirty, like three thirty-eight, and then you put your retainage back into that, the retainage was two sixty-five, nine, it brought you to just over six hundred thousand dollars. If you take out the one fifty, which you have to because it was a vote of uns, um, trust fund, it leaves you with four fifty-three. So that's the nu, the number that you're.
That's the unit.
Making a decision.
So four fifty-three, we have to decide if we want to retain and how much out of that four fifty-three and how much to send back to the town.
Yes.
Are only allowed, limited that we can retain is three thirty-five.
Three thirty-five.
Of the four.
Of the four, yes.
So at least the hundred went back to the town.
There you go.
You said that we want more to go back, right?
Unless we want to send more back to the town, that's correct. I'll move to retain two fifty thousand.
Second. Discussion, yeah, so why'd you pick two fifty, I was kind of thinking three hundred. I just, I was just kind of wondering, I mean, I'm thinking about like, what might be a possible cost that we could get hit with to truly enough for that possible cost. I know that's really.
One year we got a lot of snow and there was a question of whether the roof was gonna hold it all because we had this flat roof. So then we had to bring in this crane, I think, and scrape all the snow off. It got to be like this crane, I don't know what, two hundred thousand dollars on money. You talked about the special.
I was thinking about special ed, yes.
Um, but we do have a special, but we just.
We have a special ed process. Yeah, that's true, we did add to that, how much did we put in that again?
Another hundred and fifty thousand.
So that brings it up to, you should do a hundred and fifty, did we use it all?
No, we didn't have any, I mean, you didn't have to use it.
Okay, alright.
So you're really, and, and you took a huge hit in your budget with special ed, you budgeted for a lot of things that sort of happened.
Yeah.
So I feel like our budget is now in a good place, I can't, I don't even want to say it aloud, but I hope that doesn't happen again, what happened last year.
Alright, so. So two fifty, so two fifty might be reasonable because that's like a, you know, natural disaster kind of thing.
In my eight years, I've never used that. Not that, it's not that, and we've had these things that have happened, but because of our budgeting, I think we've done a good job.
I just, it would be nice to get back to the town.
One, one thing too, it's not a huge, huge amount, but our tuition for high school is more. If you have, you know, if you had ten kids moving, but we didn't get that trust fund to take care of extra high-grade tuition, that's voted down, so there is no real buffer in that budget, in the tuition line item. Unless some kids have moved out of town, but we don't know.
I've had, um, I don't, I don't have the exact number with me, but I've had several kids asked to transfer to Cole Brown in the past two weeks. I think Cole Brown is starting back up and all of a sudden people are like, hey, I want to go there, missed all the connections.
So transfer like what grade level?
Um, I had two from eleventh and I think one was tenth.
Why?
I think one was a new student.
Oh, okay.
Because I know Candy was verifying residency, so I think it was a new student to us.
So that's just one, I mean.
But that's not a lot, there's not a lot.
It's not a lot, but there are changes, like you said, we didn't get the trust fund and there will be changes, it just depends on how it shakes out.
Yeah.
Well, we can't use the retainage just to cover that, it will only be if we run out of all our money, then we can use it.
Right, right.
Oh.
All.
We would have to be in a pretty bad position.
Okay.
To use our retainage.
Which, which we saw, we are. I mean, remember, the, the budget was also frozen in the school, I mean, they weren't able to do anything.
Yeah. So if you did do two fifty, that would still give the town back two hundred and three thousand dollars.
Yes. Um, okay, so there is a pending motion on the table to approve two fifty.
There can be amendments.
There can be amendments, you can vote against it and propose something else. You may do whatever you please. Um. Okay, I'm recording. Okay. Um, all in favor of approving to retain two hundred and fifty thousand dollars? Hi. Any votes? Okay. Five of them, any exceptions? No. Okay. Um, special election stipend. Uh, so at our last meeting, it was a while ago, but it was our last meeting, we talked about offering the clerk, the town clerk a stipend for helping with the special election. That's actually not allowed by law.
Oh.
Apparently, so we're not doing that.
So we give you twenty-five thousand.
Yeah, no, I'm just kidding. The town clerk can only be paid the amount that is approved by the tax office.
Oh, okay.
Um, she was very gracious that we offered, or she was very grateful we offered, um, but she had done her research and said, I cannot. She did however suggest that her two employees are going, who are going to be doing the bulk of the work, be offered a stipend. Um, so there's the, I don't know their exact title, there's the um.
Deputy.
Deputy clerk and the town clerk. So they're gonna be the ones processing most of the ballots and getting sort of everything ready from that, um, from that end. Um, she did suggest that the amount that we had previously offered her, which was two fifty, she thought that was a little bit low. Um, and there was a suggestion of five hundred per person as a stipend. So I said I would bring it to the board and see what the board would like to do. I did research, you want me to give you the numbers for the other folks that are budgeted? Um, I got the numbers from Amber, so the moderator gets paid a hundred and ten dollars. Um, your school district clerk, um, for everything they do is six hundred and thirty. The treasurer is a thousand, but that's really not to do at a town meeting.
That's for the year?
That's for the year.
That's for the whole year. That's for the year.
So. Yeah, so this would be, um, and you might bet it's probably a sort of in addition to salary.
Special election.
Um, so do they get paid a salary also, these students?
So they're paid to, uh, yes, at the town hall. And then I think that her comment was that we're adding a lot of extra work to their already busy schedule.
They're paid for four yards a week or something.
However, yeah, I'm not sure that that's.
Would they, then if they're going to the election, would they otherwise not be at the election, they would be at the town office?
No, I don't, I think, I don't think we're paying them outside of their typical, right, because that, was that my understanding?
Yeah.
Was she saying it was just a lot of extra burden placed on them, I believe is what she was. And would be.
So what's the, what's the extra burden, I'm not exactly sure.
Um, I have the email, do you want me to? I, yes, what I imagine is that, the argument is that because we're doing a special election, we are going to have more voters than we would have if it was just the primary. So we are increasing the amount of work that they're doing.
But they would have been there anyway.
Right.
Cutting out.
Right, and I can't, I can't say things, like I can't say that our, the turnout's gonna be different because of the special election. I don't know. Was there anything else? It was, um, she said, over the next few months, they will be fielding all the questions, comments, added absentee work because more people will vote because of the special election. Um, they are your face to the public, they will bear the brunt of the additional responsibilities and inquiries from the public on top of our already demanding schedule.
So she was suggesting five hundred dollars each?
Yes. So we, we don't have to do that? I mean.
We don't have any money in the budget to do it.
We don't have any money in the budget to do that. Um. So yeah, something to consider, what, if anything, we want to, we have any, any money in the budget to anything. So we have a school district, a school board line.
Yes.
I don't know how flush it is. None.
Like, I'm not any lines flushed.
It really depends on, you know, if you have to post any notices, if you have public hearings, if you, like, you know, it just depends on the year of how busy things that our school board needs to access their lineup.
And there is an elections line. But that.
It's the, for the moderator and the clerk, they have their own lines. Yeah, like the, the costing ballots. And you are paying this year for additional printing of ballots, so that's an additional expense this year. So I don't, I was trying to figure out from her email, I don't think you're paying them to work additional hours, you're just.
Right.
Thanking them because you're, you know, you're adding to.
Right, so it's more like from here to voting day, there's gonna be more work.
Yeah, I think that was my, that was my sense.
It's a recognition of their additional.
So box of chocolates wouldn't.
I'm sure if you dropped it off, they would find that lovely, I'm not sure that's gonna do it.
I'm glad, okay.
I, I, as another comment, I will say, they are of course doing us a huge favor by helping us process all the absentee ballots. Um, and part of the reason we are doing it on the special election day is because they were already doing the work. So I do want to recognize that they will be increasing what they had already planned to do. And it is saving us, I don't know how much money, by, by doing it on this day, um, but just to consider. I don't, I think, I, I think a thousand dollars would be a burden to that line, because I don't think we have more than a couple thousand dollars in that line. I'd have to take the budget. Yeah, but. So there's a discussion, um, you know, the way I was sort of thinking of it was, you know, they're not, I don't know that they'll be working sort of outside their normal schedule, but if you were doing, you know, ten additional hours of work at forty-five dollars an hour, it's two hundred and fifty dollars. So I'm not sure that it's even ten hours of additional work. Um, but that's, I don't know, I don't know the best way to think of it, but we don't have to offer them anything. We can offer them, we can make another offer to them. Let's see what they want.
Well, voting day itself is seven, seven, that's twelve hours. So, you know, consider that's a day of voting, so, and all the stuff that works up to it.
I don't know how much they have to do on voting day.
Versus, are they counting from seven to nine? Are they involved in counting? Is that somebody?
I think the, I mean, the town is going to compensate them for their job. I think what we're looking at is the additional. You know, it's, they're going to be more busy because we've given them additional things to do during their workday.
Very quickly.
It's an acknowledgement of.
Yes.
Theoretically, we just added two thousand people who are, who are only voting because they're so excited about the fair contract.
Yeah, I don't think I would go budget specifically down there.
Total.
No, per.
Per.
I don't think going to five hundred per is more than, more than a condition of us. But I, I.
I think so. We were really trying to keep this low by doing this. We're trying to do this people.
Which does save us money.
Correct.
That's very.
I think two fifty would be just reasonable, personally. I don't know.
I'd say three twenty.
And you come up with that, wow. You just like that.
If it wasn't all math, man, it's a suggestion.
I mean, you, not to go into more into this, but you did have your moderator come an extra night. You didn't have your school district clerk come an extra deliberative session, an extra.
And are we paying them to answer any questions?
Right, well, that, that's kind of my, you know, that was, that was additional work for them, not done during their regular, what their regular expectation is. You kind of doubled what they do every year. It's just something to think about if you're thinking about people and, you know, they, they work for you already and you double their work.
A thank you card.
When do we have to make a decision, Ben?
When you don't. Whenever you want.
Yeah, I mean, I would say.
It's not going to happen until you make a motion.
Right. It's not going to happen until you do make up your mind, but it doesn't have to be.
I would say we don't have to make a decision to that yet.
If we don't want. Um.
So, uh, so the other people, they get paid and it would probably be illegal for them to take anything from us, just like it was for her. The moderator or the.
No. No, they couldn't take. The board sets theirs, yeah.
Almost.
Yeah. And you, you, so typically for a deliberative session, you pay your moderator a hundred and ten. This year he did two deliberatives. You know, the clerk typically does one election process. She's doing two this year.
Right, but they're getting paid for.
They're, no, they don't pay for one. That's what I mean, that, I mean.
Right, so if we're going to talk.
You speak about them as well.
Yeah, right.
Yeah. Just keep that in mind when you're trying to decide what you want to spend out of your lines. You think everyone should suffer.
Yeah.
Why people don't sign up for these positions?
Who would you?
Chocolate.
We did get chocolate, thanks to Nicole, so.
It was a big chocolate.
It was a big chocolate.
Well, we were thinking of it, I, I did not even take into consideration Eric and Dan.
And Gail.
This is their salary for the year and, but they're going to do it twice for us for the same salary.
A one hundred and ten dollar salary. Do you want to think about it for the next two weeks?
What says the board?
I'm happy to think about it.
You are or not?
I am. I'm happy to wait till.
Okay, yeah.
Okay.
I'm going to select out what happened with the budget.
Yes. Um, speaking, okay, so any other comments on the? Okay. Speaking of the school board budget line, back to school barbecue.
Yoohoo.
Um, I added this as an agenda item because Zach mostly just did everything before. And now Zach's not here, so now we have to figure it out on our. Um. So the back to school barbecue is happening on August twenty sixth?
Yes.
Yes. Traditionally, the PTO and school boards are working together to get it set up. The PTO does a lot of it. Um, but, but the school board members, um, all typically come if you are able to make and serve the food. So we have several grills. We need to figure out propane tanks and things like that. Nicole, do you want to join us?
Sure.
You don't have to. Um. But what time does it start for? What time do you want to do? What do you want us to do? You tell me.
Um, Chris and Brian do a lot of the heavy lifting. They bring all the tables out and the tent out and things like that for us, but then we actually do the setup.
Yeah.
So I usually try to arrive no later than three, sometimes two, two thirty. Start putting the tables out, cutting watermelon, all those things. I think in the past we've changed the clothes to go on by three thirty to have great cooking. So that way, four o'clock, the doors actually open, you can go see your teacher. And then some people are pretty quick. They're, they're ready in four o'clock to see food, so. I think starting drilling by three thirty would be a really good goal.
Okay.
Um, and I.
Is it four to six or four to seven?
Well, the flyer says four to six is for the teachers to have people in, in their classrooms. And the barbecue says four to seven, but last year we were like clean.
We were.
Like everyone was ready to go once the teachers were gone.
Mm-hmm.
We didn't.
The teachers came out, I think, and maybe got food, but we were. It wasn't even, yeah.
I think a lot of the teachers were like, mine just spent a long day.
Did you already send the flyer home?
I, yeah.
It's on Facebook.
Yeah, so I put it on Facebook and I.
Even though it's a shed and I wouldn't expect that we'd have. I would say grill off by six and we're cleaning up and the stragglers can still have whatever's.
They have our lukewarm food, it's in the tin.
So the big questions are, the propane tanks are here, but I don't remember how many or if they have to be filled. So I wonder if I should just go poke around the shed and find them and see if they've filled them right inside the room. Because I think we bought an extra one, not two.
Right, Zach managed.
Four. Because each grill needs two and it won't function without two connected to each one.
Hmm.
So there has to be a total of four. So I'll make sure there's four. I'll make sure there's four. Um, and then in the past, the board has brought all of the grilling tools and coolers from us to borrow and ice. I know Prince Lavidy always brings her great big giant cooler for us to use, but typically we need about seven.
Coolers?
Yeah. I have a one. Because the meat goes in some and then the water goes in some and it, you know, it takes a lot of space.
Cooler.
In the past, I believe Trish helped get all the food. I think we've done like six hundred burgers.
Gail, Gail has it, yeah. It's over.
But I think six hundred would always have been the burger.
Hmm.
Like six hundred hot dogs, six hundred.
Are you saying with last year's?
Yeah, yeah. She was going to cut back, but, because she had a lot of leftover, but I, I told her not to.
Because then I think you guys just use it for teachers the next day, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
And we still have leftovers.
Oh, wow.
But burgers don't go to waste.
Yeah, in the cafeteria.
Right.
I have the list from two thousand nineteen. It was six hundred canned burgers and three hundred hot dogs. And then PTO did the watermelon and the cookies.
And there's chips. Was there chips?
Yeah. There, there has been, were there last year? I think there were chips last year.
I think we just did chips.
Yeah, like, like just potato chips.
Yes. Yeah. The yellow blades.
Right.
Yeah. Nothing crazy. And buns. And a job.
I thought, I thought.
He's the best bun lady.
I thought, um, Gail got watermelon last year and you, they, it comes pre-cut, I think, if I remember.
No.
I look like a crazy person.
Okay, well, the year before that, when Mary, there was a year that somebody purchased watermelon.
Definitely me the last few years.
Okay.
And we do all the cutting because we bring the knife, the cutting boards. I always forget to bring in the knives, so we borrow knives in the kitchen.
Yeah, well, do you want me to, do you want us to check on that? Or do you want to just keep it as the PTO thing?
I don't mind doing it because I had someone reach out to me that they might be willing to donate at least part of the cookies, so we won't have to buy all the cookies this time.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Okay, so coolers. Does anyone have a cooler?
I have one. It's not two.
Okay, that's fine.
I think it's pretty big.
If we can all bring a cooler.
I might have two this week.
I have at least two. Um.
Mine's on wheels.
Yeah, it's big.
And it has a light. Saying.
Okay. So I think if we all bring a cooler for two, plus the. How many do I have to do?
Hmm.
Yeah, I'd say a big bad one.
Hmm.
Not the, not the little things, but the big ones per cooler.
Okay, so everyone bring, I said their cooler.
It's a, it's ten pounds, twenty pounds.
I thought they gave even twenty five.
Five pounds, yeah.
Yeah, so last year, um, I think we had four people on the grill. So, yes, if people have grilling utensils, we will need to bring grilling utensils.
And a lighter.
And a lighter.
That's not something you normally have.
So lighter.
It's on the list, a lighter, just in case.
Do you have your favorite apron?
Well.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
Um.
Did you just, did you say two grills are going?
Yeah, the huge ones.
The big ones.
Yeah, they're like huge.
What are they called? Black stuff?
Black stuff.
Black stuff, right?
Yeah. Very cool. I was very humiliated, but we figured it out very quickly.
I'll pass out chips.
Yeah. Um.
Cheese too. Gail gets cheese.
Yeah, Gail does the cheese. Usually we have to separate it because it's a nice solid block. Separate the slices for you guys to put on the burger.
Really interesting.
Yeah.
Yes.
Um.
The buns are out of the freezer.
The what?
The buns.
Yeah, you're, you're picky about that.
They get soggy.
And condensation is not completely dry and fun.
Okay.
I take my job seriously.
I know you do. Bun, bun lady.
Something else, if possible. I think so, and that way you can feel comfortable with the way the grills are set up.
Oh, yeah.
It's still time to move them.
Because I had to separate them. I was using paper plates.
We do try to go through the tree with a shade, you know, so, so the shade moves. So we try to start you in the shade under the trees, but then you do have your cooler where it's comfortable to wrap and swing leaning and things like that.
I had to bring my daughter last year and she just ran, they'll, all the kids just run around the barrel and it's fine. Then they find friends and it's great. They all have, they all play on the big rock. And have a great time. Um, yeah, because then you don't have questions about the barbecue. It's really fun. People are, everyone is really excited and have nothing but good things to say, so, so.
Would you like main tines?
No.
Nobody thought about that at all.
If someone wants an impact, you can certainly wear on. Um, yeah, anything else that you need from us?
I think that's it. Because school takes care of all the food, with the exception of watermelon cookies.
Thank you.
That's amazing.
And Gail's doing it.
And like you, yeah.
I used.
They've always got gloves and things too, and the silver pants and the lemonade even, I think.
Oh, yeah, the lemonade.
PTO has.
I was going to say, you guys need pointers, I remember, okay.
Thanks.
Cool. All right, sounds good.
Awesome, thank you.
Thank you. Um. Policies, we didn't, I moved most of the policies, but Patty did have one policy, I believe.
So you received, um, from the School Board Association, a very long email with two packets of very dense information when the Title Nine regulations changed. Um, so those went into effect on August first. And the School Board Association, knowing that meetings were happening, um, very quickly, um, recommended that we adopt their temporary ACAC policy. We, the readings, adopt the sample policy. There are many policies impacted by the regulations, but they felt that boards really needed to adopt ACAC right away. Um, at, at a minimum, and then we can work on the others. It came from the School Boards Association. It was a Title Nine update. They have a packet and.
And you said it was recent or it was?
Yeah, um, I think it was a couple of weeks ago. I can find it and forward it. I can't remember when it came.
There's a bunch of calls for resolution.
Yes, oh, lots of those.
Yeah.
Um. Oh. It came on July twenty sixth.
Oh, yeah, got it, Title Nine, okay.
What's the date on it?
Twenty sixth.
So it's in the, it's a very large packet. Um, so the request is to waive, um, second readings and adopt just that one policy tonight. And it's temporary, which means that they may be doing additional edits this school year.
That's why I don't like touch reads.
There's a ton of them, but ACAC is the only thing.
Could you just kind of like give us a summary of what this is about?
ACAC.
Well, it, there's like a fifty page summary, so I, I don't want to, I, the federal laws changed, um, on discrimination and.
What's the Title Nine?
I, I, we're going to go through everything at some point. I think that one policy is really their advice to you.
That was about it.
Yep.
Um, this ACAC is, uh, provisions of sex discrimination, sex rape, and policy ingredients procedure is what that is.
And it's, it has the components to the regulation, the Title Nine regulation changes, which are very complex. Um, and this just came out, and just, their advice was to adopt this policy, temporary. And then work on everything when we can, as soon as we can.
Yeah, sex discrimination, sex rape, harassment, policy. I will move to accept the temporary policy from the HJSA.
Second.
On policy ACAC.
Mm-hmm. Second.
I don't.
You're in my dangerous.
I agree.
Um. I know this is not, we haven't had a lot of time to discuss or review it, but does anyone have anything that they would like to discuss about the pending motion?
Uh, I, in, in my time, I was working with the HJSA, they've, they've always been, but, but I trust them, so.
They're, yeah, they're trying to get you in compliance with the law.
And I appreciate that.
But the newest law and then obviously they've attached many other policies and this is a work in progress, but this was their advice to get this one.
I'm opposed to, it came along on August first.
It's went into effect on August first, yeah.
So you're expecting us to adopt it right away because of the August first date?
Yeah, yeah.
And they'll have more time to.
Mm-hmm, there, we got, and the other policies that go along with it, yeah. Yeah, I mean, there's, for policies that are required by law, like Title Nine, there's not that much we can change necessarily about policy anyway.
And they're written by a lawyer, and if we want to change anything, I would have to send it out to our lawyer to look at it and.
Probably tell us now or hopefully. Okay, any other discussion? Okay, all in favor of the pending motion?
Aye.
Aye. Any votes? We will bring back policies. Policy committee in September.
Can't wait.
Yeah, very excited. Um, informational items. I don't think there are any. Public comments? Wow. There's really record people. Okay. No public comments. Um, I'm going to make a motion to go into non-public session.
Second.